There goes what we go before we get our meeting, let's just bow our heads and in an act of thanksgiving for all the blessings that the creator gives us in this life for the food that satisfies our hunger for the the water that quenches our thirst for the growing time for all the plants and medicines for the trees that give a shade and beauty for the the flowers that add beauty for the things that are nature, the birds, the animals, the house pets and in our community and and the surrounding communities. Let us give thanks for those blessings. And let's remember, we always need the creators help in each and everything we do to obtain a successful outcome.
Yeah, I'm going. So before I begin our meeting, I would like Curtis to wish you and and Allison a happy anniversary. You've celebrated 25 years of marriage, so congratulations.
That comes new tomorrow, chief.
We wish you health and happiness for the next 25 or 50 years.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So there's been a motion made to adopt the agenda. It's been moved by Linda and seconded by Curtis Brandt. And is anyone opposed to that motion? Seeing none, motion is carried. And some of our councillor are absent today. Chris Brandt's absent due to work and we had to reschedule our council meeting that was supposed to take place yesterday because we, the Chiefs of Ontario were hosting a Great Lakes Water Quality Initiative meeting yesterday and Tuesday and Wednesday, so we were required to attend that, so we had to adjust our council meeting this week. So for those who are joining online, thank you very much for doing so and just bear with us. So we have an agenda before you. The June 16th minutes. Business arising from those minutes, any meetings outside the territory, a support letter for Dr. Jody John for for research work that she'll be doing. We have two hydro connections, one at 169 Marks Road, 180, 190 Old Highway 2. The Environment and Climate Change Canada's request to request of the meeting. There are business registrations for Turtle Island Supplies, PAL renewal for Riley Bernhardt, harvesting requests for Braden Dubay, request for a meeting for the residency bylaw. National Peace Officers run through the community. Some invoices to be paid, Stephen Fay invoice, this relates to the Economic Development Commission, I believe, and other initiatives, Derek Wong invoice, Hicks Morley invoice, Alan Pratt invoices, Golling invoices, JFK Law invoices, Nera invoice, that relates to the the loss of use study for the Turtun Pen lease area. The Indigenous Services Amendment Number 103, right additional funding for MBQ, post-secondary funding issue, temporary hydro connection, Flat Street, and then there's an add-on for the Huron brand lift station. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? No, Linda and Curtis, pardon me. Those are the items that are on the agenda. Thank you much. The minutes before you. I'll read them. The Mohawk Council minutes of June 16th, regular council. A meeting of the council is held on Monday, June 16th at 9:45 a.m. in the council chambers. I was present, councillor Ogari was present, Chris Brandt, Curtis Brandt, Erin Ferrante, Linda Levine, and Chris Miracle were present. Staff members present were Angela Miracle, the acting CEO, Shelley Boden, the executive administrative assistant and recording secretary to the council, Charles Miracle, my executive assistant was here, was moved by Curtis and seconded by Chris Brandt to adopt the agenda, motion carried, motion two. Moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Erin Ferrante that the council minutes of June the 2nd be approved, motion was carried. Motion three was moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Ogari to approve the business registration new for spotless cleaning owner Jennifer Brandt, the motion was carried. Motion four was moved by Ogari and seconded by Erin to approve the Mohawks, the Bay of Quinney Health and Safety Manual Hazard Identification Chapter, Hazardous Reporting Chapter, Risk Assessment Chapter, Health and Safety Participation and Health and Safety Communication. The motion was carried. Motion five was moved by Ogari and seconded by Curtis to approve the Mohawks, the Bay of Quinney Film Policy, motion was carried. Motion six was moved by Erin and seconded by Curtis to pay the Stephen invoice number one in the amount of $3,895 for corporate matters. The motion was carried. Motion seven was moved by Chris and seconded by Chris Chris Miracle and seconded by Chris Brandt to approve to pay the Alan Pratt invoice number 6370 in the amount of $396.50 for Turtun Pen Loss of Use. Voice number 6371 in the amount of $402 for the Culverston Land Plate. The motion was carried. Motion eight was moved by Chris Brandt, seconded by Curtis to approve to pay the Hicks Morley invoice number 823513 in the amount of $2,880 for the Human Resources. Motion was carried. That should say issues there. We're not hiring anybody. Motion nine was moved by Ogari and seconded by Chris Brandt to approve awarding the contract to Hardstone Fire Protection Inc. for a total amount of 144,000 for the Elders Lodge, take off, they were in there, the Elders Lodge sprinkler retrofit and project budget totaling 274,256,000 dollars. There's something wrong there. That's not 274 million. There's one too many zeros on there. That should read 274,236 dollars, motion carried. Motion 10 was moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Ogari to approve awarding the contract to Kentucky Mechanical Services for a total of 27,568.40 for the MBQ rental units, motion was carried. Motion 11 was moved by Erin and seconded by Chris Brandt to approve the addition to the MBQ organizational structure under the Housing and BPM band property maintenance for a second mortgage analyst, motion was carried, and just spell out what BPM is because community members might may not understand that. Property maintenance. Councillor Chris Miracle recorded a negative vote, would like to see, would like to see a survey to the community on what they would like, motion was carried. Motion 12 was moved by Ogari and seconded by Erin to approve the addition to the MBQ organizational structure under the Housing and BPM for a toll building general maintenance worker, the motion was carried, motion 13 was moved by Erin and seconded by Ogari to approve the addition to the MBQ organizational structure under the Housing and BPM for a housing project coordinator, the motion was carried. Motion 14 was moved by Erin and seconded by Ogari to approve the addition to the MBQ organizational structure under the Housing and BPM for a plumber. The motion was carried, motion 15 was moved by Erin and seconded by Linda to approve to waive the rental fees for the Community Centre for the Mohawk Fair Board for fundraising on June 18th and July 19th and request that the Community Centre rental policy not-for-profit be reviewed. Motion was carried. Motion 16 was moved by Chris Miracle and seconded by Ogari to prove to proceed with the request for tenders for the Huron Brandt Drive Development Phase 3 in the amount of 7,672,560 to approve to use the Open LP 2008 Funds, motion was carried. Motion 17 was moved by Ogari, seconded by Curtis to approve this staff meet to set the priorities for the up unopened road launches, the motion was carried. Motion 18 was moved by Linda and seconded by Chris Miracle to approve MBQ elder care residence. Gajit Jyotha, when the flowers blossoms, elder care home, elder circle, and Ji Jun, Ji Jun what say? Ji what saying is? The place they take care of them, support them as the top picks for the name of the Elders Lodge and post were two weeks for the community to prick the top name, the motion was carried. Motion 19 was moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Ogari that the Mohawk Council approved to utilize Open LP 2008 Funds under the Community Development Component in the amount of 425,048.91 for the five homes constructed on Upper Slash, then two homes constructed on Norways for the 2023-2024 fiscal year council resolution 26-013 was signed and approved, motion was carried. Motion 20 was moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Ogari that the council approved to utilize the Open LP 2008 Funds under the Community Development Component in the amount of 53,991 for the five ones constructed on Upper Slash and two homes constructed on Norways in 2024-25 fiscal year, MCR 25-26-014 was carried and signed, thank you. Motion Chris Brandt was seconded by Ogari and the Mohawk Council approved to utilize the Open LP Fund 2008 under Community Development Component in the amount of 1,352,823. There's something wrong with those numbers there. We need clarity on those numbers, so we will 821, 23s? That's 1,352,823.18 for the 14 homes being constructed in Flat Street for in 2024. Should read in 2020, 24-25 fiscal year, MCR 26-15 was passed and signed and that motion was carried. Motion 22 is moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Ogari that the Mohawk Council approved to utilize Open LP Funds, 2008 Funds under the Community Development Component in the amount of 368,368,369.82 for the 14 homes being constructed on Flat Street for 25-26 fiscal year. Council Resolution 26-016 was approved and signed, motion was carried. Motion 23 was moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Ogari that the council approved to utilize Open LP Funds 2008 under Community Development in the amount of 297,822.40 for the North Street Development Infrastructure Costs for 23-24 fiscal year, council resolution 26-017 was approved and the resolution was signed, motion carried. Motion 24 was moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Ogari, the council approved to utilize the Open LP Fund 2008 under Community Development Component in the amount of 963,239.40 for the North Street Development Phase 1 Infrastructure Costs for 24-25 fiscal year, 24-25 and fiscal year 25-26, council resolution 26-18 was approved and signed, the motion was carried. Moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Ogari that the council approved to utilize Open LP Funds 2008 under the Community Development Component in the amount of 315,102.46 for the Phase 1 Costs of the Shandle Supportive Housing Hub in 23-24 fiscal year, council resolution 26-019 was assigned, motion was carried. Motion 26 was moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Ogari that the council approved to utilize Open LP Funds 2008 under Community Development Component in the amount of 448,467.46 for the Phase 2 Costs for the Shandle Supportive Housing Hub 24-25 in fiscal year. 24-25 fiscal year, council resolution 26-20 was approved and signed, motion was carried. 20, motion 27 was moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Ogari that the council approved to utilize Open LP Funds 2008 under the Community Development Component in the amount of 51,985.56 for Phase 2 Costs for the Shandle Supportive Housing Hub in fiscal year 24-25-26, council resolution 26-021 was approved and carried. Motion 28 was moved by Chris and seconded by Ogari that the council hereby approved that Chief Arda Almeral removed the clean and solar from the bank vault for the economic service on June 29, 2025, council resolution 26-022, motion was carried. We can call out the visit of Prince Edward.
And the MTR are done.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Okay, motion 29 was moved by Ogari and seconded by Chris Miracle to approve a letter of support to Dr. Jody John to conduct research support supporting indigenous care providers, and the motion was carried. The upcoming meetings were identified at that time, June 17th and 18th was the Chiefs of Ontario Annual General Assembly. June 25th was the Tandem Mohawk Council Local Business. June 26th was Indigenous Services Candid Lobby Day. June 26th was the OFNPA meeting. It's also, was also the Sovereign Wealth Meeting following that, just record that. It was the it wasn't OFNPA, it was OFNLP. The casino. June 9th was the council, regular council meeting, June 16th was the local business. June 23rd was regular council, June, July 30th was local business. August 6th was regular council. August 13th was local business, August 20th was regular business, August 27th was local business. Motion 30 was moved by Ogari and seconded by Erin that this meeting went to private at 11:20 a.m., that motion was carried. Apart from the corrections that have already been announced, are there any additions, omissions, or corrections to the minutes of June 16th? Curtis, do you have any?
No.
Chris?
Yes, chief, on motion 11.
Yes?
The Oregon Instruction Review. I voted negative because my understanding is that there was a survey currently underway. And my position is, let's hear the results from the community on the survey before we hire a bunch of people. And in particular, chief, I've been waiting many years to see a report on converting a number of existing MBQ rental homes to homeownership. That's converting existing MBQ rentals to homeownership, and we build more rentals to backfill, but community members need a chance, especially with lot prices so expensive, to own a home. And I've been waiting and waiting, as others have been, for an option for homeownership for community members. Point is, we won't need a bunch of more staff if we make the portfolio a little bit smaller. Thank you, chief.
Well, there still has to be ongoing collections and follow-up on late rental rears and stuff like that.
Yeah, well, the collections aren't done by a plumber, but chief. Anyways. All right, just clarity on my, my position.
Okay.
Survey, surveys being done. Wait for the survey. We want to see homeownership and all of a sudden we geared up for more rentals, we're going in opposite direction potentially from the community.
But you're sure we need the staff or she want to homeownership and stuff like that? That means mortgages, which means you need someone there to help with the paperwork.
No, but I see plumbers here. I don't, we don't need a plumber. I know, but then after that, there's a bunch more positions that really you start adding up positions and all of a sudden we're into millions of dollars.
Okay, is there a motion then to accept the minutes as corrected? And then did you have any corrections? Okay, we'll note those, those in your minutes under your, your name there for motion 11, Chris.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
A motion, chief.
Curtis?
I'll say.
And Linda? Anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion is carried. Is there business arising from the minutes? Curtis?
No.
Chris? Linda?
Just on motion 15, I just wanted to know what the status of the review for the we talked about the rental of the Community Centre charges for nonprofit. So we had anything on that?
Oh, okay. To discuss it.
Oh, all right.
So it's still under.
It's all right, it's to get it done.
It's under administrative review.
You're welcome.
Okay, under administrative review?
Yep, still, still there.
Meetings outside the territory, then did you have any?
Not that I'm aware of, chief.
Chris?
When is our next lobby meeting?
We haven't set the date yet. Well, it'll be sometime late August.
Oh, okay.
Do you have any meetings outside the territory, Chris?
Only in August, but I've already reported that.
And is, what, what meeting is that?
That is the Strategic Planning for the Woodland Cultural Centre, board of directors.
And what date is that?
I want to say August 12, 13th, I can double check.
Is there a motion for that, Shell?
Yeah, about a month ago, chief.
Okay, that done?
Yeah, there was.
Do you have anything meetings outside the territory?
There was, I had one for AM, but I don't know where to win. I had it in the etcetera. I don't know what it's called, it was an AFAO. It was a meeting about to, no.
Oh, November? No, no, this is the
No, that's, no, this one. It's November, but it has to do with
They have no finance officers?
For elected leaders. Is what it was called, I think, November 18, I haven't been during that, I don't have it.
Yeah.
But she did ask me to put it on this agenda to or say that she would like to go to that, which is, but it's November. 18th and 19th, 2025, thank you. And it is in Toronto. It's like I couldn't find it. The politics and ethical decision-making for elected indigenous leaders offered by AFAO Ontario. Thank you, Shell.
Okay, is there a motion then to approve that?
Do we need the one that's in there?
It's travel outside the territory. The other thing, there's a meeting coming up for me, there's a meeting coming up with the the AFA in Ottawa, on Build 5, on C5.
C5.
On stimulating the economy and, you know, First Nations consultation issues on development. To stimulate the economy, it's, I think it probably is more pertinent to the northern part of Ontario. But there could be, there, they can zone certain areas, economic zones. And then the legislation would seem to override a lot of other laws that might prevent development from occurring, so we need to be better informed on that. So the AFN is holding a meeting on to update chiefs tonight. And Prime Minister Carney is calling that meeting to, for consultation. Because the legislation has already been passed. And so chiefs are of the view that it's a little bit late today to be consulted on legislation that's already been passed. Canada's legislation has not been passed, it's been drafted but overturned and passed, Bill, Bill 5. Bill C5 is still waiting to be passed by, by the Department of Canada, but the bill has been drafted and tabled in the House.
So you need a motion for that?
Yeah, we do.
I'll motion.
Well, second, chief.
I think it's July 16th, there was an email that came out.
When is it, July 16th?
I'll look it up.
Six months.
I think 16th.
Which is
16th, you register on the 16th, you have to register by a certain date. And I think the meeting is on the 17th.
Which is local business, we have numerous people, yes.
Well, the meeting should be done before that to get back on time.
I know, but I'm talking, we'll be here till 3:00 in the morning.
How many people are coming?
I believe there's nine, potentially 10.
Well, this, this is quite important that we be informed on the legislation.
I'm just saying we have a conflict, so how do we want to handle it?
Well, one of the other councillors could chair the local business meeting, if we have quorum.
If anything, we might want to start earlier than these. The chief, the meeting's on the 17th.
Yeah.
His meeting's on the 17th?
No, the, the one in Ottawa.
Also.
But our meeting's the 6th.
We should, you should still play it maybe earlier?
Because there's so many people. I mean, we can go through and talk.
We can talk about it in private, if it's a local business, yeah.
So it's moved by Curtis and who seconded that motion for those two meetings?
I did.
Linda?
So that meeting is the 17th, right?
The 17th.
Bill's
It's Bill 5 and Bill C5. Bill 5 is the Ontario legislation. Bill C5 is Canada's legislation, but it's about the same thing. Stimulating the economy.
What's up, Curtis, chief?
It was the other way around. But that's, but that's
What's that?
But Linda didn't mean the most, I said, but that's okay.
Okay.
It doesn't matter, chief.
Well, no, we'll record it the way it happened.
Is this wellness conference for somebody? The chief.
The one in August?
I just seen it, chief.
Yeah.
Okay, that motion, anybody opposed, moved by Linda and seconded by Curtis? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion is carried.
I just said that.
He just, she said it's already approved.
No, I didn't say that, I said, what about this one?
It's, it's in here.
It says, well, you're
And who's hosting that? This should all be on the agenda.
It is on here, chief.
Okay.
Charlie, put it on there. And I had one.
Who's having it, Charlie? Who's hosting that one? Okay, I guess we'll need approval for that then.
So then we're going to have to move our, a decision to move regular on August 20th? Are you keep it? Are you going to change it?
Well, if it's a wellness conference, I should be going to that.
So let's, let's look at the August 20th meeting then. Can we have it the 21st?
You're still at the conference, it's two days.
Oh, it's 19th, 21st. Is that one that we're going to?
What about the 18th and Monday? Well, we're going to have another council meeting before that, so what we could do is wait till we have the next meeting on the full councils here and put it on the agenda to decide the date then.
Yeah.
We suggest the 18th, I'm suggesting the 18th. Does anybody have conflict with the 18th? Chris? Linda? Remember, you have to answer those people if they're listening online, they can't see. They can hear you. So use your mic.
No, I, only thing I have on the 18th, chiefs, at 11 o'clock is the C92 Working Group meeting.
Then you're not available. What about the 22nd?
It's only for an hour.
What about the 2nd, pardon me?
The meeting was only for now.
What time is it?
It's on from 11 till 12.
Okay, well, we could break and have our lunch at that time.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
So the, let's suggest the 18th or 22nd, just put that on the agenda. You're good with that, chief?
It's like you're seeing here now.
You're good with it? Don't forget, you have to answer in your mic.
I'm good with it.
People are listening, okay?
Like a hobo with a ham sandwich, chief.
Okay, thank you. Good, thank you. All right, next. Support letter for Dr. Jody John, so we approved that last council, I think, chief.
This is the second request.
So I'm also, she says, I'm also working on a research project in partnership with Midwives and want to make sure that council, council where we will be conducting this research in the community and to and to are in support of the work. Moved by Chris Miracle. Your secondary?
I'll second, chief.
Linda? You're good with it, chief?
Yeah.
Okay, motion's carried, chief. Hydro connections at 1669 Marks Road. It is recommended that TMC grant approval for the hydro to complete the work. And the motion will be resolved that we, the council, the Tandem Mohawk Territory Number 38, representing the Mohawks of Quinney, First Nations duly convene meeting in the council held on July the 10th. Having reviewed and sketch provided by Ontario Hydro Record Catcher to a schedule A in respect of the newer modified connection at 169 Marks Road to the electricity distribution system approved, proposed location of the poles, anchors, conductors, equipment, and identifying sketch on the Tandem Mohawk Territory.
Motion.
Second, chief.
Moved by Chris Miracle and seconded by Curtis, is anybody opposed? Linda?
No, I'm lucky.
You're good. The hydro connection at one eighty-one ninety. Old Highway Two.
Motion approved, Chief. And I'll second that one too, Chief.
It's the same wording actually, so.
I'm sorry?
It's the same wording as the other one.
Yep.
Joel Kelly, this is the request for a meeting from. Environment Canada Climate Change Enforcement Meeting. Kelly Joel, Operation Manager, Environmental Enforcement Directorate. Environment Climate Change Canada is seeking time to meet with the council. To discuss potential inspections of gas stations on the Tanya Mohawk Territory. Following the recent history of communications and inspection challenges. Marcel Miracle and Joel. And I have been meeting to gain an understanding of how. E C C E enforcement and M V Q can work together. Toward our climate, like-minded goal of protecting the environment through the federal jurisdiction enforcement mechanism. I recommend that the council, so this is from Megan. Recommends that the council set a date and time to meet with E C C's enforcement. To work together to respectfully complete. Thorough inspections of all gas stations on the Tanya Mohawk Territory to ensure their compliance. With the storage tank system for petroleum products and allied petroleum product regulation. Does council approve a scheduling of meeting and if so, what date?
Chief, I have question.
What's your question?
I was reading the documentation and it appears that some items. Are not meeting regulations, but yet our gas stations are still being allowed to proceed with developing their gas stations, but they don't meet regs. So then if that's the question, if that's the fact, why are we allowing these places to get their licenses?
Let's find out for sure that that is a fact.
It says, it says it in the briefing.
Well, then I think, where, where is this occurring? Like, what, what steps have been taken to protect it?
Go say that enforcement.
Apart from the issue with one gas station with weights and measures. I'm not aware of any other people not cooperating with the regulatory process.
I think the weight and measures is different a little bit in that.
Okay.
The weights and measures. Like you said, Chief, previously that they were, council was supportive of them coming in. But this was an actual consumer complaint. And. They have to investigate that. And that's where there was a concern. So. If we're meeting with these people, you might want to consider also, because you, in the email, you expressed that you wanted to talk to them. Maybe you said a meeting to meet with these people, but also weight and measures. You know, for us to reach you the same day.
I haven't had it.
To come in and talk to you guys.
I haven't had any emails with, with Environment Canada Climate Change on gas stations.
No, this is their request.
Yeah.
To, what I'm saying is maybe you want to set time aside to meet with them about the gas stations, but also with weights and measures.
I think we should find out what it's about and, and I guess if there's to deal with Chris's complaint about non-compliance. There, there's supposed to be annual inspections when they're set up. They're supposed to comply with, comply with the. Electrical Safety Authority, the technical standards authority.
With the business registration if they don't have.
Exactly. That's my, that's my, that's my understanding unless they comply with the S S A. E A S, E S A. That they don't get, they don't get approved. And there, there was a requirement to have insurance.
Because several, or I mean, I know we just had one gas station that was like a year and a half, I think, waiting for.
So is something falling apart there in the administrative process of how this is being handled or? I know there's.
They're not receiving with their registration though, if they don't. Meet those obligations.
But I think what he's saying is that these ones are already running and they're not complying. And why are they still being allowed then?
So I guess what we need to do. Are, are the inspection?
I think we're talking two different things. Angela's talking measurement. Measure, well, weights and measures is Canada. Okay, because now we're hearing, well, containment.
Kind of both, yeah.
Right, so if I'm reading this correctly, it's saying, hey, these guys shouldn't be allowed to do this. Well, how are they even getting their licenses and permits in the first place by the same people are saying?
Okay, let's, let's bring Megan up to clarify her briefing note, please. Is it time to go over?
Chief, it's ten to.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll finish with Megan and we'll deal with this one and we'll head over. It won't take long.
Just, just for, you know, a good couple seconds.
We got that tension?
We're going next door to discuss the water line up Highway forty-nine.
It's the MTO.
MTO.
There.
It's about design and issues and stuff like that.
Exactly. They're trying to tell us, no, you gotta do this. And we're saying, no, this is our best route. How was labeled by the engineers, so. It's called push and shove.
Stay away from the, the north side of the, the west, the west side of the highway because the gap, our gas line is there.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what they proposed, the other side.
And so where does MTO want it?
Well, that's what we're saying, Chief. They're saying it could be beneficial, better on that side, but we're saying no.
No.
We're saying stay away from the nine hundred pound gas line. Like, it's, 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 it's major.
No, we don't want to.
No, we know.
Hit that by mistake and have a massive.
And when, and when they designed it, it was on the east side. So. Where there was nothing, like just a little bit of bell and stuff like that. Yeah, I know she was. She's off, Chief.
Okay, I'd suggest then we defer this then.
Yeah.
When Megan's here. We'll move to defer it.
I will, Chief.
I'll second. As far as I'm checking with Diane, as far as I understand, I would like to know whether or not all the inspections have been done. And are they all compliant with the E A S? E S A and, and the.
Again, you want to issue the business registration of that.
And weights and measures. We can do a couple of Turtle Island. This is a bit new business registration renewal. New business registration. The, it's called Turtle Island Supply and Corey Lloyd is the owner. It's an e-commerce business selling safety equipment and gear to corporate. Commercial, industrial process. Consumers across Canada. Corporation with Corey owning twenty-five percent, Larry Sparks twenty-five percent. Naiwash Power Group fifty percent papers attached. Verified a hundred percent indigenous owned by. C C I B certificate attached, no inspections required. This council.
Motion.
Chris Miracle?
I'll second, Chief.
Linda? A pal renewal for Riley Barnhart. Riley Alexander Barnhart. Is it Bernhardt or Barnhart?
Barnhart.
Barnhart. Riley Alexander Barnhart, a member of the Mohawks, requires a letter signed by the chief and that confirms he's a hunter. From our community who hunts for the sustenance purposes and for a. Possession and acquisition license application. For a non-restricted firearm, Riley is requesting a letter confirming his membership. That he hunts for sustenance purposes for a fee for the, for the fee waiver. His application is attached and the briefing note has confirmed confirmation for the chief and council. Of his application, a copy of his status card and is also attached for TMC's review. It is recommended that council approve the requested. Request from Riley Barnhart for the chief to sign a letter, attach, assigned. Attached letter is signed, is signed, please leave at front desk for pickup. We did.
I'll, I'll move, Chief. For Riley.
I'll second, Chief.
I do know.
There's a request for permission to fish. Brandon Albert Quinn Dubay has contacted the Mohawks of the Quinny on June thirtieth and requested permission to harvest fish in the area. In twenty twenty-five, Brandon Albert Quinn Dubay is a member of the Attachouan First Nation. He's requested for permission to fish for vast fall land perch from June thirtieth. To November fifteenth in the Hay Bay area and small lakes, about ten to fifteen kilometers. A copy of the status card is attached. It was recommended that we grant permission for Braden Dubay to. To hunt in our area and intuition letter. Does council approve?
I'll motion, Chief.
Is there a secondor?
I'll second.
Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Linda, you're good with it?
I'm good.
Motion's carried. Request for a meeting date. It can put on the agenda by Tanya King Miracle. And our Community Services Department, TMC is requesting information on residency bylaws. Including residency bylaws from other communities. The residency bylaw from a possession, six nations are going to, are attached. Council has discussed residency bylaws in the past. A chronology will be developed and included in the meeting package along with additional. Community laws and background information. TMC is to set a date for initial discussion on the residency bylaw. Motion should defer to full council, Chief. This is quite critical. We get a handle on this because there's a lot of things happening in the committee that need to be regulated.
I agree.
Defer to full council. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second, Chief.
Linda? You'll put it on the agenda for next council day then?
Yes.
Let's get, get on with it.
Almost ten o'clock.
Yeah.
Well, we can finish this one. Will we be done with that section?
You can actually almost finish off.
What's that?
You can probably get finished on it.
Well, let's do two more. So the National Peace Fund. The National Peace Officer Memorial Run will be holding the annual run in September twenty-fourth. The bunnies will travel through the Mohawk Territory on Highway two. And will be escorted by the Tanya Mohawk Police Service. Attached letter includes a tribitation to attend the kickoff in Toronto and arrival in Ottawa. Attached the permission letter was shared with T P S and there were no issues with this request. And this is for. So these are people, I guess, that have been, is it killed in the line of duty or? Or injured?
Yeah.
Does council approve?
They could do this every year, Chief. Yeah. I'll make a motion, Chief.
Curtis?
I'll second, Chief.
You're, you're second, Linda? Are you in favor, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Now, if we could pass this, we can give it back to Todd. And we'll just, then we've got some invoices to approve and a contribution agreement. So there's an application to the Ministry of, I think it's Housing Infrastructure Program. To develop, to do some work with the lift station on Huron Brent Drive. The work will include, Aqua recommends this work. Following improvements on Huron Brent Drive location. So what will be done will be. Supply and install a new pump station control panel. Including replacement of all the power distribution and control components. Replacing level measurements components, replacing alarm components, connection to Aqua outpost. Approve the application of the municipal housing improvement program. Does council approve to submit the application?
I'll move, Chief.
Curtis?
I'll second.
This one is going to be in by five?
It does.
Today.
Today.
Do we have to sign it? Yeah.
I don't think there's a resolution. We just have to approve. So the.
So it's not on the agenda.
So the provincial.
It's an add-on.
Yeah.
H, H, B, D, okay, whatever.
There is a resolution. There is a resolution that will have to be signed here.
That's right.
And so the, the cost for the provincial government, if it's approved, will contribute seventy-three percent of the cost. Total cost is five hundred and eighteen thousand seven fifty dollars. The province would contribute three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, six eighty-seven, fifty. M V Q contribution would be twenty-three percent, one hundred and forty thousand, sixty-two, fifty. So that M V Q contribution will put it on our lobby session next to the department. So let Todd know this is approved.
But do we have?
But you need a copy of Shelly.
We still need the M C R, Chief.
Yeah, there's an M C R to be signed. We can sign that when we come back, but let Todd know this is approved. Make a copy of this.
But he can't do anything until he has the M C R.
Okay.
They request.
Well, let, let's sign a resolution. We can get that done. The wording's all there.
She just went to get up.
I think if you take five minutes and start doing some pay invoices, you can get the bill.
I know.
Chief, while we're waiting, I just wanted to acknowledge the incredible job you and Charlie and everybody else did with that event. We hosted for the Prince. It was amazing, amazing event. And when that Tim book came back or prayer book. What an, what an amazing, amazing session. I was so proud of everybody there.
Well, we're proud of our community.
And appreciate the invitation. Thank you, Chief.
Well, anyway, we'd like to add more, but the church alone has so many, and the purpose was he was coming to church to see our. To pay tribute to our people that had served in, at wartime and the special relationship between our people on the ground. That's existed for three hundred and fifty years. And just basically to honor our people and what the, what the chapel represents.
I'm just sorry I couldn't make it because I was sick. Well, because I moved. And that's what's why my back is all up because I've moved.
I figured, Linda, that normally if you say you're going to be there, you should keep your word.
I'm going back to ruin the roof.
They're going to the neighborhood.
I'm not back there. I was back there for the last.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't know.
So that, while we're waiting for that resolution to sign, let's carry on with our invoices. I can just write on.
Yeah, we'll get there.
It's what?
Yeah, yeah, do them later then.
Okay, let's sign, well, let's sign the resolution so Todd can get his application. And get that over. Just give Peter a call, let him know we're on the way. Now, I'm glad we made good use of our time, we're halfway through the agenda. Within a half an hour.
Yeah, I told you.
Chief, well, what are our back story of the cultural center that we've done?
What artifacts?
I mean.
What's the artifacts here and then in the past?
No, some of the, some of them, I'm gonna have them hung up in the pantouse, so they should, they were just all, all dusty up in that mezzanine. They used to be on display in our administration building, so I'm gonna have them put them up on the boardrooms.
I guess my point is that we have a community center with an amazing, amazing, well-lit entrance. But it's a ton of dead space that you could have, who's hanging you, because the walls are so big in that area. And we thought of this twenty-five years ago when we put it up, I can guess. Hanging? But we haven't done any. Like we said, it's not on storage, but we have facilities where we can just quickly leave, just play this stuff.
We need to hang a big canoe.
Hey?
I think we need to hang a big canoe.
I just, we're going out there, they're saying that it's so big and we could be showcasing some stuff on the barren walls, twenty-five little walls, a gold sky, it's all there. Even with pictures of elders and chiefs.
Didn't we take, wasn't there a talk to it, one to come up with a museum?
We're happy with that, but then we got the cultural center and.
Are we breaking? Are you breaking that idea? We're still live. Chief, are you breaking?
Okay, uh, okay, we're, we're going to recess until we'll recess until eleven thirty, we'll come back here at eleven thirty and I'd like to thank all, anyone that's joining us online. So tune back in at eleven thirty, thank you very much, bye.
Is getting a motion? You're gonna do a motion recess?
Motion? Till eleven thirty.